Good afternoon. Welcome to a very special meeting agenda, something that we don't do terribly often here. Today is Wednesday, August 31st. The time is 1:03 PM. This is a special meeting agenda to decide on the individual who will succeed our resigning prosecutor, who will be resigning effective the last day of September, which begins tomorrow, right? September 1st. And so the purpose of the meeting is in fact to do just that. I'm Chris Philios. I am the chairman. Attending also is Leslie Duncan, Bill Brooks. And so I should also point out that there is no public comment at this meeting for obvious reasons. We don't like to subject individuals to public comment. That's something out of respect for the individuals involved. We will be interviewing, we'll be asking questions, and we'll be deliberating at the conclusion. And so let me go through some of the protocol here, and I do want to welcome each of the individuals from my left to right, Mr. Bryant Bushling, Mr. Donald Gary, and Mr. Stanley Mortensen. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for being willing to subject yourselves to this. So let me begin first. We did receive a letter of resignation from our current prosecutor, that is Barry McHugh, who has served us admirably. That letter is dated July 13th, 2022, and it's pursuant to Idaho Code 59-9062. And he will be commencing his term as a district judge in January of 2023, but his resignation is effective on September 30th of 2022 of this year. So that takes care of that. Of course, when a resignation is tendered, we have to accept it, which in fact we did as a Board of County Commissioners. And as we move along here, there are certain procedures that are required. And let me also indicate that the resignation of the civil office must be in writing, and it must be made in accordance with certain protocol. By all county offices to the county board, which in fact is us, and we did receive that as indicated earlier, these resignations shall not take effect until accepted by the board, and in fact, we did do that. And so as we move forward, let me also point out as we go through this that we did accept the resignation on July 15th, and that is indicated by a response signed by all three of us, known as the Board of County Commissioners. So with regard to the relevant statute, which is Title 59, dealing with resignations and vacancies, and this has to do with county office vacancies, and I should point out that the prosecutor is somewhat unique in that the prosecutor must meet certain qualifications, not the least of which is a law degree, and of course, licensing in the state of Idaho. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Leslie Duncan to read this relevant section, please, so you don't get tired of listening to my voice.
All right. Idaho Code 59-906, subsection 2. When a county elected officer accepts a county commissioner, gives written notice of intent to resign to the Board of County Commissioners of the county of which he is an elected officer, and when the notice of intent to resign specifies the effective date of the resignation, the county central committee of the same political party of the officer whose office is being vacated may submit a list of three nominations to the Board of County Commissioners prior to the effective date of the resignation. The Board of County Commissioners shall fill the vacancy by appointment from the submitted list to be effective on the day following the date of the off-- that the office is vacated by the former officer. And the person selected shall be a person who possesses the same qualifications at the time of his appointment as those provided by law for election to the office. In the event the county elected officer rescinds his notice of intent to resign by notifying the Board of County Commissioners in writing prior to the effective date of his resignation, all actions taken either by the Central Committee or by the Board of County Commissioners to fill the anticipated vacancy shall be null and void. If no appointment is made prior to the day the office is vacated, the provisions of subsection 1 of this section shall apply.
Thank you. And again, regarding the qualifications, the legal qualifications, I'll read it. It's very brief. It's Title 34, dealing with elections, Chapter 6, Election of County Prosecuting Attorneys Qualifications. No person shall be elected to the office of a prosecuting attorney unless he or she has attained the age of 21 years of age, at the time of his or her election, is admitted to the practice of law within the state, and is a citizen of the United States, and a qualified elector within the county, which means that individual has to be a registered voter. And so that's where we go from that. What is a qualified elector? Basically, someone who's at least 18 years of age and is a resident of the state and of course, a registered voter. Okay. So moving on, we've established the legal qualifications. We've established that each of the candidates before us does in fact qualify for this position. And once again, I will indicate that the three individuals, this time I'll go from right to left, Mr. Stanley Mortensen, Mr. Donald Gary, and Mr. Bryant Bushling. And so what we'll do is we will open up with a statement from each of the candidates with regard to their qualifications, experience, however they choose to approach it. It'll be limited to three minutes, and ongoing from there, the individual questions we will limit to no more than two minutes for the responses. We do have probably about a dozen questions, and the same question will be asked of each of the three candidates. And so before we go any further, let me see, that's about it in terms of protocol and introductions. And so without any further delay, I'm going to ask my co-commissioner, Leslie Duncan, to begin with the first question, and actually, it's going to be introductions. So why don't we start with Mr. Bryant Bushling? You have three minutes. Go right ahead, please.
Well, my name is Bryant Bushling. I've submitted a number of documents to you, so I will try to avoid reiterating those and boring you with all of those things. Just as a bit of introduction to personally to myself, I've been married for 33 years to my lovely wife Linda. We met when we, when I was a lawyer in Los Angeles. We married when she was a deputy public defender. I was a deputy prosecutor. We have three children, which to me are a great blessing. I was an only child, so having three wonderful children has been an incredible experience. I am a practicing Catholic, and I attend St. John of Arc and St. Thomas the Apostle very often, and I find that practicing law is much easier than practicing my faith. In terms of my approach to dealing with problems, I take a pragmatic approach unless principle is involved. I always like to solve problems, and I like to be proactive with problems. So that's just a little bit about me. In terms of why I want this job, when I first found out that it was, there was going to be a vacancy, I, I recognized long ago that Barry McHugh had done an incredible job turning the office around. For those of you who may not know, the office was in a bad shape when he took it over, and he turned it into a place that's very respectable, has excellent lawyers, and the respect of the bench and the bar. I looked around and I said, I'm definitely got the experience to do this, and I had to think about it, and I, I think I have a proven track record of being able to handle and, and at least try to fulfill the mold that he has set, and I think I can do that, and hopefully the materials that I gave you have shown why I believe that. With regard to civil, the civil division, because the prosecutor here does have duties that are different than most prosecutors, I think the one question people may have is can you do the civil part? And I think that's, first of all, all of us here are lawyers. We were trained as lawyers. We don't go to law school to learn law. We go to law school to learn how to think as lawyers. I have those tools. My entire third year, my job in my third year of law school was to write opinions for the bench in Sacramento Municipal Court. All of the bench officers there, there were 10 judges, I wrote 40 to 50 opinions for them. Many of them became the opinions, were adopted verbatim as opinions of the court, so I do have those tools. With regard to the criminal prosecution, I've been a prosecutor for almost 36 years of my life. I worked in prosecution with the Sacramento DA's office. I've done between 165 and 170 jury trials. I had a unique experience, which most people don't have, of being in a unit in the LDA's office that investigated and prosecuted public officials. So I prosecuted public officials for rape, child molestation, bribery, grand theft, excessive use of force by police officers, and many other things.
I'll give you another 15 seconds. Go ahead.
Okay. So based on all of the documents that I've submitted, I believe that I am capable of carrying on the tradition that Barry has set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gary, please.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with us.
Can you just turn your mic?
Yeah, just hit your button, and it'll pick you up.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with us. You have a tough job, and you must select the person to serve as Barry's successor here. I've submitted my resume as well. You've seen that with my credentials, my experience. I'm also married. I've been married for 40 years, have two children, and I was born well before 2001, so I, I meet the age qualifications, and I'm licensed in three states, including Idaho, and so I meet the legal qualifications. You get, you get to select the person who's going to serve as Barry's replacement for the remainder of this term, and possibly for a long time to come, because in this county, the power of the incumbency is a very, very strong power. And so you have, you have a tough decision to make. You have three well-qualified, I think, candidates. Each of us is licensed attorneys living in Cootney County. Two of us have prosecutorial experience. I do not. Two of us have been lawyers for three or four decades. One of us is now approaching his 10th anniversary as a lawyer. The other candidates here, my colleagues, they have significant prosecutorial experience, 10 years prosecutorial experience. As you just heard, 36 years prosecutorial experience. I, I don't have that prosecutorial experience. I do have experience as a lawyer. I have an experience in training lawyers, in mentoring lawyers, in working with them on a lot of different issues. I think between all of us, I would have the steepest learning curve. I would have the steep, a steeper learning curve, I think, on the prosecutorial side than either of these gentlemen would have on the civil side. It's a different kind of an animal, but I think frankly, it's easier to get help on the civil side than it is to get on the prosecutorial side. You'll say about us, we sometimes sound like we're lawyers. We'll go to places and be like, you sound like you're a lawyer. Well, that's because being a lawyer is different. We're trained differently. We're trained to think differently. We're trained to analyze things differently. And the work that we've done in other fields, while it can be beneficial, for example, I was a CPA for 12 years before I became a lawyer. Well, that can be beneficial, and it can help us in the work that we do. It's not directly related. What a police officer does, what an accountant does, what a business person does is different than what a lawyer does because of the way that we approach problems, think about problems, have to analyze problems. And with that, I think we're all equally qualified, that we're all very qualified. We have different resumes, different paths. I come from the out, outside. The elephant in the room is that I have not been a prosecutor. I have no experience in being a prosecutor. I think of the three candidates, I am qualified to do the job. Of the three candidates, what I call myself, the most qualified. I don't believe that I am, but that's a decision that you need to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mortensen, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. Again, my name's Stanley Mortensen. My wife and I live here in Cootney County. I've been married to my wife for 22 years now. We have eight children and one son-in-law. I've been involved in public service practically my whole life. My father was a Marine and is a retired FBI agent. I've always wanted to serve the public, and that's why I began public service. I began serving the citizens of Cootney County by being employed at the sheriff's office. I was a deputy sheriff for nearly eight years, first as a detention deputy, then as a patrol deputy. I loved being a detention deputy. I went home every day satisfied that I contributed to protection of the community by guarding some of the worst people we have from through town. And it wasn't very long before I realized I wanted to have more influence on--
I'm sorry, can you hit your microphone?
Yeah, that's right. Your mic is off. Just hit the button.
There you go.
Sorry.
I realized quickly that I wanted to have more influence on how I could protect the community and how I could serve, so I became a patrol deputy. And I loved becoming a patrol deputy, but it didn't take me very long before I realized there were bigger ways to serve the community and protect the community. So I went to law school. After law school, I was an assistant professor of criminal justice for about a year and a half. Then I began prosecuting. This is my 11th year as an attorney, my 10th year as a prosecutor, nine of which have been with Cootney County. I'm now prosecuting some of the same people that I used to arrest. I'm prosecuting some of their children now. I've seen over two decades the public safety issues that are unique to Cootney County. I've been involved with them for a long time, and I've, I go home every day satisfied as a deputy prosecutor that I'm protecting the community, that I'm serving the, the community I live in. And so I would love to continue on that path. I echo Mr. Bushling's statements that Mr. McHugh turned this office around. I was a deputy sheriff under the former prosecutor. I saw what it was like. I can tell you from firsthand experience, it's night and day. I think the public respects this office. I think the police officers respect this office. I teach cops. I think they listen to me more than any other attorney. I was at the police academy, listening to an attorney telling me how to do my job when they've never done my job. That's a frustrating experience. I've done the cop's job. When I teach cops, I think they listen to me more because I can relate to them. I think that helps the public. I'd like to continue in that capacity as the prosecutor. I have a great relationship with police officers. We have great police officers, and I want to continue in that role. Part of the reason why I've applied for this job is self-serving. I want to keep working at this job with the county until I retire. If the wrong person gets this job, that puts my job at risk. I also want to keep this job because I care about serving the public. If the wrong person gets this job, the public is put at risk. Nothing against any of the other candidates, but one of them does not have prosecutorial experience. Not all attorneys are created equal. Not all attorneys can prosecute. I would hope that somebody who needs to see a dermatologist, or sorry, I would hope that somebody who needs a kidney transplant wouldn't go to a dermatologist to get a kidney transplant.
Five seconds.
Not all doctors are created equal. Not all lawyers are created equal. I think that you should strongly consider all three candidates, but I think that having prosecutorial experience coupled with my police experience puts me into a category by itself. Thank you.
Okay. So now we'll move on to the questions, and we're going to follow a certain order in the questions that we've prepared, but we're going to basically rotate so that one candidate doesn't have an advantage over the others. So we'll go with the first question, and I'll ask Leslie to do that. Go right ahead, please.
All right. So I'll go ahead and start with Mr. Mortensen here. And you kind of mentioned this in your opening statement, so feel free to expand. And I believe two minutes per response?
Correct. Yeah, you'll have two minutes to respond. Go right ahead.
All right. So tell us why you think you're the best candidate for this position. Briefly describe your criminal prosecutorial experience, and what assurance can you give that you will not, that you will remain objective in choosing when, when to prosecute?
Thank you. I believe I'm the best candidate again because I have experience that none of the other candidates have. Yes, I'm younger. I have less attorney experience, but I have experience in law enforcement that neither of them have, and I think that is very unique. That helps me in my relationship with the police officers. It helps me with my relationship with victims and witnesses, and I think it helps me in I think, I, I know that I can do this job fairly and with no bias. A lot of people, when they hear that I was a former sheriff's deputy, they think that me and other prosecutors are just in with the police. That's not so. There are rare occasions where the police officers make a mistake. They, you know, violate the Constitution. They search somebody when they shouldn't have searched, or maybe they pull somebody over when maybe they shouldn't have. As prosecutors, we have a quasi-judicial role. We have to look at those cases before they make it into court and decide, should I dismiss this case? Should I even file this case? We have to make those decisions, and I can tell you, in rare occasions, I've dismissed cases or not filed cases when I think the evidence is likely to be suppressed because of current case law. I've had to look at cops I'm friends with, cops that taught me how to do my job when I was a cop, and tell them, you didn't do things the right way. We have to dismiss this case. I have demonstrated that I can do this job fairly and without bias.
Thank you. Mr. Gary, do you want us to repeat the question?
No.
Okay. Go right ahead, sir.
I don't have prosecutorial experience. I have experience in managing law firms. I don't view the prosecutor as being the person that needs to be in court prosecuting the cases. I view the prosecuting attorney as the, being the person who has to run the largest law firm in Cootney County that has a civil division and has a prosecutorial division. One thing that I've learned in years of law is that, I teach young lawyers. I'll teach lawyers that are fresh out of law school, and they go to very fine law schools. Those lawyers are far smarter than I am, far smarter, but they are not wiser. Wisdom only comes with time and experience. And when we're looking at, if we're looking in the real world, if we're looking at the world of private law firms, large private law firms, of which I have been a partner in a large private law firm, when you look at that, what you'll see is generally you become invited to be a shareholder or partner when you've been a lawyer for seven, 10, 12 years, depending on your advancement and development. But even at that, you're still under tutelage until you, you've had more experience under your belt. And it's, it's the wisdom that comes with the age that, that I would be most concerned with. In terms of how I would prosecute cases, quite frankly, if you chose me, I would need to rely on the experience of the experienced counsel that you actually have in the office. My biggest concern in that regard would be that senior staff may take offense to an outsider that came in, and so my biggest concern would be, would I be able to retain those really, really well, well-qualified prosecutors that would view me as an outsider? That, that would be the, the, the thing that would, would give me the, the most amount of pause.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bushling, do you want us to repeat the question?
I'm sorry, I would.
Yeah, no, go right ahead.
No problem.
We did all three parts, didn't we?
Yeah.
Pretty much. Okay.
Tell us why you think you are the best candidate for this position. Briefly describe your criminal prosecutorial experience, and what assurance can you give that you will remain objective in choosing when to prosecute?
All right. As you've heard, I've been a prosecutor for a long time. In addition to my prosecutorial experience in terms of courtroom activity and all of the units that I've been involved in, I've also got over nine years of management experience. My management experience consisted of managing from the small side, four or five attorneys up to 31 attorneys, oh, over 30 attorneys, I believe it was 31. So I have that experience. The question is, can I do, can I do the job? And I think based on my past, and I've provided you the, the supporting documents for many of those who worked for me, one of whom is now our retired justice, Justice Halem Donadina, who noted, "He also demonstrated admirable temperament as the head of our team in an extremely busy and stressful environment. The bulk of our caseload consisted of murders and attempted murders in a part of Los Angeles County infamous for violent crime, and many of us were constantly in trial. Mr. Bushling kept us focused by providing the voice of reason and calm in that extremely hectic environment. I can't recall a single time when he lost his temper. I left that assignment a better prosecutor because of Mr. Bushling. For the rest of my career at the district attorney, I tried to emulate the high degree of professionalism and ethics that Mr. Bushling exhibited as our leader in the gang division." Again, that was Justice Halem Donadina. He became a justice after he worked for me. I think each of the letters that I submitted speaks to the fact that I always tried to prosecute ethically. In my 36 years, and actually, as 39 years as an attorney, I've never had one complaint for anything that I've ever done. I've always analyzed cases objectively. That's my goal. People will ask you, what do you think? Well, when you're asking for my opinion, I might give you one thing, but when you ask as a lawyer, what do you think? I take that to mean, how do you analyze the situation? And I've been very disciplined in looking at every case for the, the elements of the crime that are necessary to prove the facts that back up those elements or don't back up those elements. And I've just had a career of doing that, so given my proven track record, I think I can do that here.
Thank you. Leslie, do you want to keep asking? Do you mind?
No, we can do that.
Okay. Second, that was actually a three-part question. So second question, go right ahead.
All right. So I'm going to go ahead and start with Bryant, and then Mr. Gary will get the third question. What have you done to familiarize yourself with the day-to-day responsibilities of the job?
Well, I've spoken to Barry McHugh about it. That's number one. I've been in the office for a number of years, so I've observed what happens in the office. I looked at the county website to determine what occurs, and I've tried to follow many of the things that have come, for example, before you in terms of the civil division. So basically, I'm, I think I would still be learning, but I've run an office before, and I understand what needs to be done. And, you know, just sitting in my office, looking around and seeing the issues that come up, I think I have a greater depth of understanding of how the operate, office operates and what occurs, just given the background that I've had managing people before.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gary?
I have this fault, and this fault is that I have to be candid and honest. And the, the, the truth of the matter is, is that I was approached relatively, shortly before the commissioners' meeting last week, and recruited to be a part of this process, and I agreed to do that in the interest of a public service. I don't know how the prosecutorial, prosecutor's office works. I know a little bit about how some of the divisions work, and it would, I would have a steep learning curve, but if I were selected, then I would spend as much time as I could with the senior members to learn how the office works. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mortensen, do I need to repeat the question?
No, you do not. Thank you. I think my nearly 10 years here, nine years, has prepared me for this on a day-to-day basis. I've done a lot of the job just by being a deputy prosecutor. Now, there is a lot about the job I haven't done. I have not done the civil portion of it, and I know there's a lot that Barry McHugh does that I'm just not aware of. And so I've researched things. I've looked at statute. I've talked to people around the office to learn about what they do. I have very good relationships with the people in the office. I do believe most of them support me doing this. However, I can tell the panel here that this office is a very efficient office. It's a pretty well-tuned, well-oiled machine. We have some brilliant attorneys who work here. If I get this position and I'm faced with learning or performing a task that I'm not familiar with, I know for a fact I have outstanding employees who will assist me and teach me how to do the job, and they'll be there as a reference. Most of us in this office have open-door policies. We're always going to each other for help and advice, and it's, I don't believe that's going to change anytime soon.
Thank you, sir. So we're on to what is our third question. Go right ahead, Leslie.
Yes. Mr. Gary, what do you see as the biggest challenge for the prosecute, or the biggest challenges for the prosecute?
get the third question. What have you done to familiarize yourself with the day-to-day responsibilities of the job?
Well, I've spoken to Barry McHugh about it. That's number one. I've been in the office for a number of years, so I've observed what happens in the office. I looked at the county website to determine what occurs, and I've tried to follow many of the things that have come, for example, before you in terms of the civil division. So basically, I'm, I think I would still be learning, but I've run an office before and I understand what needs to be done. And, you know, just sitting in my office, looking around and seeing the issues that come up, I think I have a greater depth of understanding of how the office operates and what occurs, just given the background that I've had managing people before.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gary?
I have this fault, and this fault is that I have to be candid and honest. And the truth of the matter is, is that I was approached relatively, shortly before the commissioners' meeting last week, and recruited to be a part of this process, and I agreed to do that in the interest of a public service. I don't know how the prosecutor's office works. I know a little bit about how some of the divisions work, and it would, I would have a steep learning curve, but if I were selected, then I would spend as much time as I could with the senior members to learn how the office works. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mortensen, do I need to repeat the question?
No, you do not, thank you. I think my nearly 10 years here, nine years, has prepared me for this on a day-to-day basis. I've done a lot of the job just by being a deputy prosecutor. Now, there is a lot about the job I haven't done. I have not done the civil portion of it, and I know there's a lot that Barry McHugh does that I'm just not aware of. And so I've researched things, I've looked at statute, I've talked to people around the office to learn about what they do. I have very good relationships with the people in the office. I do believe most of them support me doing this. However, I can tell the panel here that this office is a very efficient office. It's a pretty well-tuned, well-oiled machine. We have some brilliant attorneys who work here. If I get this position and I'm faced with learning or performing a task that I'm not familiar with, I know for a fact I have outstanding employees who will assist me and teach me how to do the job, and they'll be there as a reference. Most of us in this office have open-door policies. We're always going to each other for help and advice, and it's, I don't believe that's going to change anytime soon.
Thank you, sir. So we're on to what is our third question? Go right ahead, Leslie.
Yes. Mr. Gary, what do you see as the biggest challenge for the prosecute, or the biggest challenges for the prosecutor's office as a whole? And then, how would you address those challenges?
With the change, the biggest concern I would have would be retention. And again, I think, looking at this realistically, the retention issues that would concern me, or the way I would look at it is, how would senior staff feel about the new prosecuting attorney? If that prosecuting attorney is an outsider, is that going to affect the attitude of senior staff? If the prosecuting attorney is somebody that's been there for a long time in a senior level, will that affect the senior staff's retention? If the prosecuting attorney is a younger lawyer, would that affect retention? That would be the first concern that I would have. The second concern that I would have would be the learning curve. And again, I believe that the learning curve on the criminal side would be the steepest, or would be the steepest for me, steeper, I think, than for my colleagues. But they would have a learning curve as well on the civil side and on the management side, and all those being equal. Experience in the job? I don't have experience on the prosecutorial side of the office, and I think that would be kind of a difficult thing, I think, because most of the work that the prosecuting attorney does is in prosecuting cases. And again, as I mentioned, I think it's easier to find resources on some of the civil answers. You can actually go into the community and co-counsel with somebody to get some of those answers. But on that side, you're going to need somebody that's experienced in those areas. Those would be the concerns that I would have. And then, obviously, the final issue for the prosecutor's office is to continue to recruit and train well-qualified persons to be in the office on both sides of the fence.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the fourth question, go right ahead, Leslie.
I don't have an answer for Mr. Mortensen.
Oh, sorry. Your turn.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think the biggest challenge facing this office is, to echo Mr. Gary's statements, is retention of employees, but also attracting qualified new employees. And that's a matter of public safety. We have some brilliant attorneys in this office, brilliant attorneys. A lot of attorneys become prosecutors because they want to get their feet wet. We are in court every day. I've talked to attorneys I went to law school with 10 years ago, 11 years ago, they've never stepped foot into a courtroom. They're jealous by how often we are in court. People who quit this office, leave this office with a lot of experience, and they make a lot of money elsewhere. Those are the attorneys we don't want to lose. A lot of people become prosecutors because after 10 years, your loans can be forgiven. Those 10-year attorneys are the attorneys that we don't want to lose. They are attorneys who prosecute murder, rape, child molestation. When we lose those attorneys, it hurts the office and it hurts the public. If we don't retain current employees, and I'm going to say something that's not popular, I'm talking about paying them more money, we're going to lose brilliant attorneys and the public could suffer. Now, don't get me wrong, none of us get into public service, none of us prosecute because we want to become rich. But if you don't pay prosecutors enough where they can stay and tempt them to not go out and make more money, you will have a lot of turnover. We have a lot of turnover. We're going to have more turnover if we don't fix the retention problem. And it's not just about making a lot of money, it's about paying people so they don't leave, so the public's not put at risk. When somebody leaves the office, everybody else has to pick up the slack. Not everybody in the prosecutor's office can prosecute a child molestation case. Not everybody in the office can prosecute child pornography cases. Not everybody in the office can prosecute murder. Those are the attorneys who are getting close to getting their loans forgiven, and if we don't find a way to retain them, they're going to leave, and it's going to hurt the office and the public. That is a huge challenge, and I would love nothing more than to be here to fix it.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up question.
Go right ahead.
Is money the only thing that keeps attorneys in the office?
It's not. It definitely isn't. Money won't fix everything, but it's a big part of it.
Okay, and Mr. Bushling, would you like me to reread the question?
No, I can answer it, thank you. I agree with my colleagues that retention is probably the number-one issue. I have some perhaps subtle differences with them. Having been a prosecutor for many years, retention is always an issue in prosecutor's offices. In LA, it was an issue, and that was an office with nearly 1,000 lawyers. People often go to the prosecutor's office or public defender's office to get experience. So retention is always an issue. Here, it's exacerbated because of the cost of living increases that we've experienced due to our growth. I believe that salary is a very, very important component. Some people just can't afford to make it here. We've had people apply to the office, get hired, and then go, I didn't know that it costs so much to live here. So we have, do have that problem. I don't know what can be done about salaries, other than where I'd get the position, talk to you three who know more about that than I do, and see what we can do in terms of improving that. I know there's been a recent raise approved, I believe, that will help a great deal. I believe also, however, though, that the work environment is extremely important for retention. People will, there's a trade-off. People will say, you know what, I'll take the less money for the good work environment. And I hate to sell myself, but I have, again, a track record in that. Just to quote a couple of people who worked with me, Judge Ocampo, Bryant was always willing to share his knowledge and his experience with less experienced lawyers. I credit Bushling or Bryant for my development as a trial lawyer and eventually as a well-rounded bench officer. Judge Cotto, he managed the branch in an efficient and thorough manner that brought out the best qualities in everyone. I won't keep going on, but the bottom line is, is wherever I worked, I had people volunteering for lousy assignments. When I was the head of juvenile, that was an assignment everyone in LA hated, they didn't want to do it. I had people volunteering to come to juvenile. We always have a happy work environment. I'm big on communication. I'm big on having a place where my deputies feel that they can call me anytime, they can come to my office anytime. So I think that there are...
10 seconds, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, the bottom line is, I think there's other things besides salary that retain attorneys. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next question, go ahead.
Yes, so I believe it's Mr. Mortensen's turn. What do you think the prosecutor's office is doing well that you would like to see continue under your leadership?
Again, I believe this office has a great relationship with law enforcement, and I believe that the public has faith in this office. I believe the public is aware that this office is different than it used to be almost two decades ago. And again, I believe that this office has a great relationship with law enforcement. If this office doesn't have the faith and support of law enforcement and the public, then things can go downhill very quickly. And so I have a continued interest in preserving those relationships and making sure that the progress that has been made continues.
What about civil division? Your comment was targeted primarily toward the prosecuting side, criminal division. What about civil?
Sure, again, it's...
What are they doing well? Go ahead.
I believe that they're doing well, just like the prosecutors are, the criminal prosecutors. We have great civil attorneys. I believe they have great relationships with the department heads and the departments they are over and advise. I believe that the prosecutors, the civil prosecutors, have great relationships with Board of County Commissioners. We have great attorneys all the way around. There is an interest in keeping them, keeping those relationships alive with the public and with the department heads. It applies to both criminal and civil.
Thank you.
Mr. Bushling?
Well, I believe that the best thing we have going in the, at least the criminal side, and I presume this carries over into the civil because of Barry's leadership, we have a strong ethics in our office. We don't prosecute, we don't over-prosecute cases, we don't fudge on anything. If you can prove a case beyond a reasonable doubt, fine. If you can't, we don't file the case, we don't charge it. I know that is not always possible because sometimes facts change, but we have very ethical standards in this office. I presume, again, that that applies to civil. I wish I could give great confidence to my answer regarding civil that Mr. Filios just asked. I can't, although I presume, again, it's true. I know somewhat what civil does in terms of advising you and the other elected officials. One of the things I was going to bring up when I originally planned my opening statement to you, that it was longer, was that I would like to meet with civil and all of the elected officials and you folks if I were to get to position and find out what can be improved and how things are going. But that's essentially what I think we have going for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Gary? Nope, Mr. Gary's turn for number four.
Go right ahead.
From the outside looking in, talking to other lawyers in the community, particularly talking to criminal defense lawyers, because I think that they have an interesting perspective on what's going on, I think that the professionalism of the office has improved tremendously, and I think it's, they're doing a really, really fine job. Another one of those elephants in the room, I ran for the office back in 2012, and as I jokingly said to the commissioners, I won, Barry got to do the job for the next 10 years. So, and I got to meet Barry, which was a good thing. But one of the issues that I ran on was a 2011 Idaho Supreme Court case that addressed prosecutorial misconduct. I haven't seen anything like that in the last 10 years. I haven't seen anything like that since the 2011 case. I do not believe that it's an issue. I do not believe it's an issue with anybody, any particular individuals. And in my communications with many of the criminal defense lawyers in town, I'm not hearing complaints that things are just not being done properly. On the civil side, the biggest concern that I have on the civil side is, when I teach clients, the first question that I have, clients will come to me, young lawyers will come to me, and they'll bring their case to me, and my first question for them is, who's your client? We lawyers are bound by the rules of professional ethics as well as by the statutes. Who is your client? If I look at Idaho Code Section 312604, the prosecutor is to give advice to the Board of County Commissioners and other public officers of the county. If I look at Idaho Code Section 74403, a public official is any person holding public office. If we look at the code of ethics, we can't represent conflicting interests, we can't represent against a client. And the concern that I have, the biggest concern I would have on the civil side is, if the Board of Commissioners say, hey, you know, what about what's going on with the treasurer? If it's a question that's not...
10 seconds.
Going after the treasurer, there's probably not a conflict. If it's a question going after the treasurer because they also represent the treasurer, perhaps the treasurer needs counsel and the board needs separate counsel. That's the biggest concern I'd have on the civil side. I think their advice has been pretty sound. The question's conflict.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Moving on to the fifth question, go right ahead.
Yes, Mr. Bushling. Aside from challenges that you would address, what opportunities do you see for improving the operation of the prosecutor's office?
Well, the big one, and I don't mean this in any way critically towards Mr. McHugh, but the big one, I think, is a combination of communication slash morale. I think they have, they're intertwined, and I, from talking to deputies, I know that they do feel like they're oftentimes out of the loop, don't know what's going on. For example, what we're doing here today, this has been just a tremendous stress for the prosecutors in the office. I don't know about the civil side, but it has been stressful because they were kept totally in the dark. There wasn't a whole lot they could be told, but maybe somebody should have told them that. And maybe Barry did, but the message wasn't getting out. Anyway, as I indicated before, I am very big on communication. The deputies would probably see me a lot more where I'd have the privilege of serving in that position. We would, I don't, I'm not a big fan of meetings, but I think sometimes they're necessary, and we would probably meet as a group at least once a month, maybe more often. But there certainly would be a lot more communication. I believe also, training is something that could be emphasized a little bit more. Doesn't have to be formalized training, but we can have, give interns and prosecutors opportunities to present some training. For example, when I was a new prosecutor here, I'd go to one deputy and ask, how do we do this here? Because different cultures and different courthouses. I'd talk to another one, how do we do this here? I'd get a different answer. I'd go, but I'd go, oh, this time I got the answer. I'd go to court and I'd find out that there was a different answer. So I think if we could have some uniformity there, where we're all kind of on the same page, I think that those, and again, that comes down to communication.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gary?
I'm the most ill-equipped to answer that question because I don't know what's going inside the prosecutor's office. I don't know the policies and procedures. I agree with the analysis that Bryant had just made concerning communication, open lines of communication, and having a team approach, but at this point in time, I haven't studied the office, haven't been into the office enough to give a reasoned answer.
Thank you. Mr. Mortensen, would you like me to read the question?
No, thank you. Two things primarily. First and foremost, I hope I'm not speaking prematurely, because in the last question I admitted, there's probably a lot about what Mr. McHugh does that I don't know about. But I can tell the panel here that it would be my intention as the prosecutor to carry a criminal caseload, at least attempt to, as far as I'm aware. Nothing bad against Mr. McHugh, but I don't believe he carries a criminal caseload. It would be my attempt to carry a caseload. It may be a lot less cases than I currently handle, but I would attempt to carry a caseload, and that would be because, one, I love prosecuting, and two, that would relieve some of the pressure that's put on the other prosecutors. A lot of our prosecutors have overwhelming caseloads, and I could carry some of that burden and take some cases off their shoulders. Having that said, and again, I could be proven wrong. If I get this position and I learn a lot of those things Mr. McHugh does that makes it impossible for him to carry a caseload, then I'll find that out if and when that happens. But primarily, I think that this office can improve in what and how the public is informed. We have some great attorneys, we prosecute some difficult cases, there are some bad things that happen in this community. The paper doesn't report on it, and if they do, it's almost never right. Okay? We need to have more press releases. The press releases that we do have, I believe, could be worded differently, better informing the public. I believe we have a community who want to be involved, but I believe largely they're in the dark about what happens, and I would like to see this office be more transparent, not in the sense that we're hiding anything, but take greater effort to inform the public about what happens in the courtroom with some of our cases.
Thank you. Moving on.
Yep, Mr. Gary. Where do you see challenges or opportunities for improvement in the civil division of the prosecutor's office?
On the civil side, the concerns I have are the ones I raised a few minutes ago. What I would look for there is, again, I think, when you go to work for government, you lose sight of the fact that on the professional ethics side of the world, you have to understand who your client is, and you have to understand what your duty is toward your client. Most prosecutors that are on the prosecuting side, they prosecute bad guys. They're Brodickes, their client are the people, they're prosecuting a bad guy. When you're on the civil side, your client is the Board of Commissioners, the clerk, the assessor, the coroner, the sheriff, the treasurer. If there's a conflict there, you've got to be able to identify that conflict, because the truth of the matter is, is that if you bring me into the office and I give you advice that runs counter to one of my other clients, I could find myself down in Boise trying to explain why I get to keep my law license, and that's not a place I want to be. So that's the biggest thing that I would want to focus on, is those, identifying those conflicts of interest. I'm not saying they can't be resolved, but they need to be identified and addressed ahead of time.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mortensen.
Thank you. Well, I don't know that I can really answer that question because I'm unaware, because of how much I prosecute, I'm really unaware of what a lot of the civil deputies do. So I don't know that I can answer that question and just sit here on the spot and give a list of improvements that can be made. However, I've already told myself, one of the first things I'll do if I get this position is to meet with the civil deputy prosecutors and ask them, how do you feel about your job? What can I do to improve your work life, right? What can I do to make your job easier, better? I would also meet with the department heads that they, you know, influence and advise. How are my civil deputies doing? How can they improve? I would want to hear both sides to the story before I make any judgment calls. I don't think, I think the least effective way any new leader or supervisor can do is to come in on day one and start changing things. So the first thing I do is go around the office, go around the county, and ask people, what's going on? Do you like your job? How can I help improve your job? How can my employees do better? And then make some clear decisions.
Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on to the seventh question.
Actually, Mr. Bushling needs to answer number six. Where do you see the challenges or opportunities for improvement in the civil division?
I sort of alluded to that earlier with saying that one of the first things I would I sort of alluded to that earlier with saying that one of the first things I would do if I were to get the job would be to meet with all of the heads, including you, as well as the civil attorneys. It has been a concern of mine. I don't know how justified that concern is, but I wonder sometimes about the conflict of interest issue, and I think that I would like to discuss that. I don't know if it has ever been formally addressed. I think maybe we need a policy, a formal policy, maybe there is one. But I think it might be helpful to spell it out to the non-lawyers who are in the various elected officials, so that we all sort of have a common starting place, because I don't know that we do know. Maybe we do, I have not found it. In terms of other things that we can do, really it would come down to me meeting with them and finding out, the civil attorneys, what their thoughts are on how things can better be, better be done. But that's essentially my answer. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Mortensen. How would you like to see the civil division evolve from its current level or staffing or operation? And I think you kind of probably answered that the last.
Yeah, I don't know that I can sit here and answer that. If I were to throw out ideas or make commitments about what I do, I don't think that would be too basic.
Any kind of logic or reason. I would need to learn more about what they do and what's happening or what's not happening first. And so I don't think I can give a fair response to that other than what I've already said.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Bushling.
Well, I can only analogize here, and I'm sort of in the position of Mr. Mortensen, but when I was investigating officer-involved shootings, we would have two teams, a dirty team and a clean team, because officers were forced to give a statement to the department as to why they were involved in the shooting. But that's a violation of Miranda and their constitutional rights to remain silent. So we would have one team that knew that information and one team that didn't know that information and made a determination as to whether or not it was a justifiable shooting based on the facts that did not include their statements. And I think by analogy, we've talked about this issue of conflict of interests. There may be something like that we can do where we can seal off a portion of the civil division so that there's no way that they could be accused of having any conflict. So I don't know quite how to do that, but I think that that might be a solution to one of the main problems that I think we've all identified here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gary.
In my perfect world, if I'm dictator of the state, I would change the statutes and I would have the prosecutor's office prosecute crimes, and then I would have the various boards hire their own attorneys, which is what I think ought to be done in this particular case. I just iterate, reiterate what I said a little bit earlier. There is a rule of professional ethics, it's Rule 1.11, special conflicts of interest for former and current government officers and employees. And what it says is that be cognizant because you're still subject to Rule 1.7, conflict of interest regarding current clients, and 1.9, duties that you have to former clients. And, I mean, exactly what would be done, that would require an analysis to see if there's, to see if anything is being done incorrectly. But it would be the biggest concern on the civil side.
Okay, thank you.
Eighth question, right?
Yep, and that would be back to Mr. Bushling. How do you see the prosecutor's role as legal counsel for the county? This is very intertwined, sorry.
Again, that's, it sort of goes along with some of the other answers that we've all discussed here. I'm not sure how to approach that question in terms of, I know that the prosecutor currently has under his division or under his authority, the civil division, the civil lawyers. I don't know if it should continue to be structured that way, but the bottom line is, I don't know, other than meeting with everyone, if we could come to any kinds of, as I've indicated before, that's really the one thing I want to do, is to gain more information and see if we're doing it the best way.
All right, Mr. Gary. You kind of answered that, but go ahead.
Again, we've answered the question. The issue there, for my mind, I think that they provide competent counsel in terms of answering, giving the legal answer to the question. The only concern that I would have is the conflict. Who is your client? And are you giving conflicting opinions? If you're giving an opinion to the board regarding another elected officer, is there a conflict there? And identifying those conflicts is, I think, the most important issue.
Okay, great. And Mr. Mortensen.
Thank you. Well, I don't think the statute is very wordy. It says it in very, you know, few words, but I think it's pretty well-defined. 312604 basically says that the prosecutor shall advise the Board of County Commissioners and the other departments when asked. And so I think that pretty much sums it up. It's the role of the prosecutor to give that advice, but it's when it's asked for. And so it's a case-by-case, question-by-question, issue-by-issue decision on how to address each individual, we'll call it a problem. And so, you know, I've never done that job before. We have great civil deputy prosecutors who've been doing that for a while. I would put a lot of faith in what they have to say, but to echo a statement earlier, nobody goes to law school and is taught how to be a prosecutor. You go to law school and you're taught how to become a lawyer, how to think like a lawyer, how to use your resources, how to research. And we're trained to solve problems, and sometimes you have to solve problems you've never faced before. And it's not really a unique position for any attorney. And so I think that the role of prosecutor for the civil division or for the county anyway, is pretty well-defined, not in a lot of words, but it's pretty black and white.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gary. Occasionally elected officials have differing views on legal issues. How would you propose to address these conflicts between elected officials you represent?
The issue is going to be whether there's an actual conflict. If, if somebody, if there's a question being asked by two different folks and what's being sought is just, what is the answer to the question? You know, is this permissible? There's probably not an actual conflict. If one branch, one department comes to the lawyer and says, hey, I don't think the other department's doing what they should do, this is almost no different than if you have, let's say, an officer involved in a shooting with a Cootney County Deputy Sheriff. And that case has to be farmed out to another agency, another county, because the prosecuting attorney is the lawyer for the sheriff. The sheriff is the prosecuting attorney's client in that case under the law here. And so there's a conflict right there. And so sometimes it's going to be, so if you look at the statutes and you look at 74404, the law provides that you, a public official can seek legal counsel from the prosecutor or from the Attorney General or from independent counsel. And sometimes the prosecuting attorney is going to have to say, look, I'm sorry, in this particular issue, we're conflicted out, and you're each going to need to get your own lawyer, or somebody's going to need to go call Raul Labrador.
Mr. Mortensen.
Could you repeat that question?
Occasionally elected officials have differing views on legal issues. How would you propose to address these conflicts between elected officials you represent?
Okay. So, you know, I don't necessarily know that it's the prosecutor's job to resolve those issues. Those department heads need to make their own decisions. Now, the prosecutor is tasked with providing advice to those people when asked. And so the prosecutor has a very limited role, I believe, in resolving those issues. It's to give advice. And I believe, for the most part, that advice is probably going to be the same no matter who you're talking to, even if it's within the same, we'll call it a conflict. Because, you know, the prosecutor's not going to represent or pick sides one employee over the other. That advice is going to be based in law and statute and case law, and I believe it's going to be the same no matter who they're talking to. You know, the prosecutor can't make them do things, can't twist their arm in anything. The prosecutor's going to give the advice. At the end of the day, the department heads or the county officials are going to make their own decisions based on that advice.
Okay.
Thank you.
I see the issue raised by both of my colleagues, and the question, there are many parts of this question. When legal counsel, or when civil counsel is giving advice to the board versus one of the elected officials and a conflict arises, are they obligated to do any more than give the advice and wash their hands of it? That's really one of the questions. I don't know that's been ironed out. Or do they have a duty really of representing the board if the issue were to, for example, go to court or further? So really, the way I see it is, I'm not sure that this has been ironed out, and I think it needs to be. We need, as I said earlier, we need to have some more clearly defined rules here or understandings between each other. Because if the only role of the prosecutor is to give advice and then wash their hands and they're done, that solves the problem. But if they're really considered as representing two conflicting points of view, then we have the issue is, who's going to hire the attorney? Is it going to be the individual elected official? Is the board going to pay for an attorney for them? I think that can be a really bad road to go down. So this is an issue that needs more than just my opinion, it needs the opinion of many to resolve, I think. But at least those are the issues that I see.
Okay, great.
Next question, right?
Yep, so Mr. Mortensen. A few years ago, Human Resources was placed under the supervision of the prosecuting attorney. Do you think this should continue? Why or why not?
Well, I'm largely unfamiliar with how that happened, and so I would want to learn how it was before, how it is now, why it came to be the way it is. If what was done is in accordance with law, then, you know, I don't see the point in reinventing the wheel. You know, if it's mandated by law that it be that way, then it's going to be that way. If there's room for flexibility or change, then, you know, everybody might need to entertain the change. So I would have to investigate a little bit more and become a little more educated with that issue.
Okay, Mr. Bushling.
Human Resources has to be somewhere, and it's going to be under one of the elected officials. It could be the board, and I believe it used to be under the board. Is this the best place? I think that's probably something that has to be resolved in a way of building consensus with the elected officials so that everyone feels that they're treated fairly. Right now, as far as I know, Human Resources is run extremely well, they do a good job. So why fix it if it's not broken? On the other hand, I understand that Human Resources doesn't necessarily need to be under the prosecutor's authority.
Okay. Mr. Gary, would you like me to repeat the question?
No. I'm opposed to Human Resources being under the prosecuting attorney. First, it does not fall under the duties of the prosecuting attorney by statute. Secondly, it's more appropriate, a function of the Board of Commissioners that administers and manages. However, it's a policy decision for the board.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, right?
Sorry, follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Because the Board of County Commissioners by law has to set compensation and salary, do you see any conflict there if HR was under the V O C C and there was maybe differing thoughts?
In my experience, there aren't two different sets of laws. The laws that apply to IBM also apply to the County Board of Commissioners. In IBM, they do not have their human resources under their legal department.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Bushling. What is your familiarity with juvenile diversion operation? And what is your commitment to continue juvenile diversion program? And where do you see the challenges or opportunities for improvement for juvenile diversion?
I'm sorry in that I have to report, I don't know that there are any improvements needed at this time. I think that juvenile diversion program is run very well. I think it's a great program, by the way. When you're young, it's the, you know, we don't want to see kids commit crimes, but when you're young, sometimes you make mistakes and that's an opportunity to learn. And I think it's extremely wise that we have this situation where young people who make a mistake, not a criminal, you know, a sophisticated crime, but make some sort of mistake in their youth, toilet papering at the high school before they graduate or something. Juvenile diversion, I think, serves a valuable purpose in that it keeps that off their court record. I don't really see that I would change anything, and my understanding is it is run very well and is very successful in terms of the recidivism rates and other considerations that we would want to see for that type of a program.
Thank you. Mr. Gary.
Mr. Bushling says it's run well, I'll take his word for it. I have no knowledge of that.
Okay, and Mr. Mortensen.
Thank you, I agree. It's, my understanding that our juvenile diversion program was the first, one of the first, if not the first in the state. I believe it's been used as a model around the state and around the country. It's to be praised. I think it's very successful. The county and the public have a great interest in seeing that continue and succeed. And so I don't know that a lot needs to be done to actually, you know, improve the program. The fact that a juvenile may not succeed in juvenile diversion, or we're going to see those kids grow up and become adult criminals, I don't think that is a reflection of how well the juvenile diversion program works. And so as far as the actual program works and how it's being run, it's my understanding that it's a very good program, it's very successful, and we can only hope that it continues to be that way.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gary. What experience do you have in creating and managing a budget for an office this size?
This size?
The size of the prosecutor's office.
This size, none. Large law firms, but not the size of the prosecuting attorney's office.
Okay. So you would say than larger than the prosecuting attorney's office?
No, smaller than the prosecuting attorney's office. The largest law firm that I was with had about 30 lawyers.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Mortensen.
Thank you. I don't have that experience at all. I've never been a supervisor in charge of a budget like this. However, and I'm not trying to be funny here, but as I mentioned before, I'm a father of eight children. When I was in law school, we had five children, my wife, me, and five children. I received the same financial aid that the single students received. I had to make a dollar out of 15 cents, literally. So I know what it's like to juggle a budget, and I know what it's like to make decisions and focus on one thing here and one thing there, and sometimes things have to take the backseat for a while. And I know that money is a finite resource. And so I have experience balancing and juggling a budget, stretching a budget, but not near to this extent.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bushling.
I have to confess to having zero experience with running a budget this large as well. The principles of budgeting, I understand, as Mr. Mortensen just pointed out, we, as individuals, we all have budgets and we have to live with it, and we have to learn how to make things work. My understanding right now is that the head legal assistant does a great deal of work in that regard, and so I would have to rely on her to a large extent, at least to learn how this all works. But I think, I think we all have kind of the basic understanding of how budgets work, although I know this is a different scale.
Okay. All right, and Mr. Mortensen. As of this moment, if you were selected, would you be interested in running in the 2024 election? Why or why not?
Absolutely. I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any point in either, any of us three applying for, accepting, or doing this job if we don't have the intention to do that. If the right person's hired, which I believe I'm the right person, if the right person is put in this position, that the public, the office has every interest in having that person continue as long as possible. It's to provide stability to the office, it's to provide stability to the county, it's to provide stability to the citizens, because again, we're talking about public safety here. If this office loses its stability, there's a lot at risk. So I have every interest in keeping my job, whether it's a deputy prosecutor or as the appointed prosecutor, as long as possible.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bushling.
I agree with everything Mr. Mortensen said, except that who's the right person to run the job. But no, I agree with basically his entire reasoning there. I think it is important for stability, for not only the deputies in the office, but for the community, to have one person, and I think it would just be disruptive, just sit here for two years and then leave. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Gary.
I can't make that commitment. And the reason I can't make that commitment is because what I want most of all is good government. If I'm the right person and the best person for the job, then I would run for the job. If I ran for office and somebody that I felt was more qualified than me, and I've said this in public before, I would step out and throw all my support to that particular person. So I won't make that commitment because I don't know that I would necessarily be the best person in that election in two years.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the list of questions.
Okay, so we're making good time here. So we're making good time here. At this time, I guess we have basically board questions and answers?
That's what we just went through, so we will be deliberations.
Yeah, we did. But what I'd like to do, before we get into deliberations, is to give each of the applicants two minutes for a summation. So let's work in reverse order than when we started.
I've got a question, so.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
My question specifically is to Mr. Bushling. I read in the paper yesterday, and it really gave me pause, about a criticism that you faced in 2016 for a meme that depicted a white police officer with a text, "If we really wanted you dead, all we'd have to do is stop patrolling your neighborhoods and wait." Now, it says you originally replied, quote, "Great point. Where the police are under attack from politicians and police become less aggressive, the murder rate goes up. I say, let them have their neighborhoods. They will be like Rwanda." And I want to know, I want to know who they and them are that you're referring to.
Well, let me give a little bit of background here, if I could. First of all, that was a conversation, I didn't know how Facebook worked. I would never make that, a comment like that if I were a public official, knowing that it were going to be public. There was a, an individual who hated the prosecutor's office who made that public. They were lurking, not announcing themselves, not asking for anything in terms of explanation. I have been very frustrated with the way the, I worked in the inner city for many, many years. I've had many, many black friends, and I know that's nothing everybody likes to hear, "I have black friends." I have. I've worked in that community for a long, long time, and I'm very frustrated with them because they keep voting in a way that hurts them. The, I was aware back in 2016, long before the defund the police movement started, that there was an anti-police sentiment. I witnessed it. I've talked to people who, in that community, keep getting hurt by doing, by voting the same way, hurting themselves. When I made that statement, 7,500 young black men were killed every year, approximately. That number remained fairly constant for a number of years. That was before the defund the police movement. When the defund the police movement happened, and various locations actually either defunded police partially, some almost totally, or came down on police and made their lives very, very difficult, that number skyrocketed to almost 10,000, almost a 50% increase. I never thought, despite the fact that I knew that there was that movement out there, I never thought anyone would be as irresponsible as some of our public officials to do that. And so I was speaking hyperbolically, I agree, but I thought I was speaking to an individual who understood me. He'd been a gunner sergeant, he understood the gang problem, and this is primarily driven by gangs. Rwanda is a place of tribal genocide, was. They actually fixed it there, to a large extent. And gangs are nothing, in my opinion, other than a tribal group. Organized as tribes, and they think of it, of themselves as tribal members. Just, and I'm not the only one that thinks that. This is what many people who study gangs believe, psychologists, sociologists. This is from the Journal of Gang Research. "The modern urban street gang has developed into a tribal organization. These new urban tribes have developed into a subculture in the streets of the urban jungle. The new urban tribes claim territory, are self-supporting, have their own language and customs, establish their own rules and code of conduct, and maintain a warrior class who repel invaders or others who threaten their realm." I don't know why anyone would support defending, defunding the police when it has been proven over and over and over again to hurt them. This is an emotional issue for me, because these now 10,000 young men who are killed every year, they're primarily gang members, and they're killed by other gang members. I've known a lot of them. It's sad to see them waste their lives, being killed because of some stupidity. I was, when I first came, learned about this issue was mid-1980s. I was in Watts. I was prosecuting a case. There was a young bounty hunter blood in my office, probably 15 years old. It's a long time ago, so I'm recollecting. And I said to him, "You're a young black male, he's a young black male, you both have the same issues, you both have the same prejudices. Why don't you join forces instead of fighting each other?" And his answer to me was, "You don't get it. He's a crip." That's the kind of mentality, the tribal mentality, that I'm talking about, and I don't know why people fall for it. But I never believed that anyone would defund the police.
Who is the they and who is the them?
The people who keep voting that way.
Pardon?
The people who keep supporting that.
You weren't talking about a particular minority?
I'm talking about the people who live in that community, yes, who keep voting that way. And again, I was being hyperbolic. I think I'm the one who cares more about the people in that community. I've had to talk to people who've lost their loved ones. I've had to be there for them, and I've had to be there when they were very emotional and hated the police's involvement. And I had to talk to them and explain to them why the police do what they do, and why what's happening to them is happening, and why I'm actually on their side.
Leslie, did you have any questions?
Sure, I'll just throw this out there, and it's for all three of you. If you are selected as prosecutor, are you going to refrain from social media participation?
Absolutely.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
And Mr. Mortensen?
Yes and no. No, because I believe social media is an effective tool to communicate with the public. This office has a social media website, you know, Facebook. And so I believe that this office should utilize those tools. And so me as an individual, probably. As a prosecutor, no.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got a follow-up to that. How would you distinguish between yourself as an individual and as a prosecutor? If you post on social media, they're going to know you're a prosecutor.
No doubt, because I'll be posting onto the prosecutor's Facebook page.
Okay.
So it'll be used for prosecutor business only.
But if you're expressing an opinion on your personal Facebook page?
I won't be.
Okay.
I didn't mean to cut you off, but that will not happen.
I thought you said that you were going to make a distinction between the personal and the professional.
Yes. If I continue personally, it'll be to communicate with family who are miles away.
Fair enough.
I'm not going to be posting job-related stuff to family using my personal account, if I keep it at all.
Okay. So here's a question for all three of you. We'll start with Mr. Gary. Since the question of defunding the police came up, and this is very prevalent right now because of our former president, would you defund the FBI?
I would be inclined to, yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Me? Okay. No, I would not defund the FBI. I think reorganization is probably in order. There's a lot of deadwood that, and this just happens with organizations when they've been around for a lot of time. People have relationships. As we've seen, they have become somewhat politicized. Defunding them, I think it would be irresponsible to defund them because our very national security depends on them. But in terms of reorganization, I think that's probably wise at this point. But how that would be carried out, we need people with far bigger badges than I have to figure out.
Mr. Mortensen?
If I may ask a question, are you asking me as a potential prosecutor, or are you asking me as an individual?
Potential prosecutor.
That has nothing to do with the job, so I'm not going to weigh in on that. What business does a Kootenay County prosecutor have suggesting that the federal government be defunded? I don't see that as part of my job description.
Well, it might not be part of your job description, but it's part of your personal philosophy, which is going to work its way into your job, one way or another.
I disagree. I'm sorry.
I disagree. Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Good.
Nope. Okay, so I'm going to re-ask it personally. Your personal opinion.
My personal opinion is that that's up to Congress. That's their job. The Constitution speaks for itself. Congress is, they control the purse strings. So, you know, who would I vote for? For Congress? You know, I don't know that that's going to be an issue in the next, in the next race.
And that is truly your personal business. Okay. On that note, we've completed our questions. I think we've also answered, excuse me, asked some follow-up. And so we're going to move on to deliberations and decision now for.
Did you want to give them two minutes to question?
Oh, yeah, let's do that. I almost forgot. So why don't we start, let's reverse the order. Mr. Mortensen, two minutes to wrap up, sir.
Thank you. I would just, again, like to express my appreciation for even being considered. I'm a deputy prosecutor. I plan on being a prosecutor for a long time, whether it's as a deputy or as the prosecutor. I'm humbled by the fact that I get to do this for a living. I love doing it for a living, and so I don't take that lightly, that this job carries a lot of public trust, and I appreciate the trust that's been instilled in me, and I intend on doing my job just as effectively, I believe, as I've been doing it. If I were to get this job, I wouldn't take it lightly. I would hope to do it for a long time. I'm just, again, humbled that I get to do this for a living, and I'd be humbled to have this job as the appointed, and then hopefully as the next elected. And so I just appreciate the fact that I'm even here and being considered by the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Mr. Gary?
Thank you for taking the time to hear us. I think you know a little bit more about us based on the questions we've been able to answer for you, and I would reiterate that I believe that I'm legally, sufficiently legally qualified for the job. I don't think I'm the best candidate of the three up here, but if you select me, I will do everything in my power to honor the position of prosecuting attorney.
Okay. Mr. Bushling?
I believe I have a track record of success. As I said, and I hate to do this over and over, over nine years of experience managing deputy prosecutors. We always had a great family sort of atmosphere, a lot of high morale. As you've known, as I've told you, many of the people that wrote me letters of support worked for me to allay any fears as best I can, that I use improper considerations in dealing with people. I believe the majority of the people who wrote me letters are Democrats. One is the first Muslim appointed to the appellate court in California. So one of my things, or one of the issues that I would like to engage in if I were to get this job is to build relationships with my fellow elected officials, as well as the board, and I think I'm good at that. I have the ability to get along with people, and as I said earlier, unless principle is involved, I look at things practically. When I was a young prosecutor, I got great advice, and that is something called the range of reasonableness. There's not always one answer, but there can be a range of reasonable answers. And unless principle is involved, I'm always willing to discuss and engage in all of those range of reasonable answers. And I think that we, as public officials, have a duty to the public to work together and to try and accomplish things for the county, and that would be the approach that I would take to this job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So now we move on to deliberations, right?
Yep.
Right, okay. Just for the benefit of everyone here, we are not required, nor do we typically follow what's known as the Roberts Rules of Order. It's not required for county commissioners in the state of Idaho, so we can be somewhat informal as to how we approach this. So who wishes to go first? Who would like to share their thoughts?
I'll go last.
Yeah. That means you're going to go first tonight.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Bill?
Sure. I think we have three good choices, and we couldn't go too far wrong with any one of Mr. Gary doesn't have the prosecutorial experience that I feel is necessary. And between Mr. Bushling and Mr. Mortensen, I'd pick Mr. Mortensen for the position.
Okay. Do you care to elaborate any further?
No.
Okay.
Do I need to?
That's entirely up to you.
No. I don't. I'm good.
Yeah, I think, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Gary for his candor, because he does lack the prosecutorial experience, and I think that's crucial. And once again, I do appreciate his candor. I think both Mr. Bushling and Mr. Mortensen do demonstrate that experience. Mr. Bushling has a wealth of experience, going back decades, actually, to California. Mr. Mortensen's experience is, of course, less, but on the other hand, also sharing the time with his experience as a law enforcement officer, which I think is actually quite crucial, because much of what transpires within the prosecutorial world, if not almost entirely, does deal with law enforcement. And even if I look at the situations that we encounter with our insurer, which is a firm called ICrimp that ensures most of the jurisdictions in the state of Idaho, be it county or cities, the most onerous lawsuits that occur are usually between, whether it's sheriff's organizations or employee lawsuits, wrongful termination, that's the other big one. And so I think that's an important background to Mr. Mortensen. Once again, the wealth of experience does seem to fall with Mr. Bushling, but I think the advantage of tenure, longevity, being able to run again, and even given that there is a learning curve involved, I think a little bit of the benefit there goes to Mr. Mortensen. But before I entertain a motion, go right ahead, Leslie, please.
Yes, so my pick would be Bryant-Bushling for several reasons. Number one, Barry McHugh did turn over the office and really has solidified, I think, respect throughout the community. His choice is Bryant-Bushling. And so just out of respect for Barry, I really think that he has seen both Mr. Mortensen and Mr. Bushling for the last 10 years. And nothing against Mr. Mortensen, because I think he's great. He did run for judge, and now it sounds like he's more interested in being a prosecutor than a judge. So to me, I would like to see Mr. Mortensen with a little bit more under his belt before taking on the prosecutor role. I think it might be unrealistic to still have a lot of caseload in that position. It is a big department. You do have several divisions, and so Mr. Bushling absolutely, I think, has more experience than either of the other candidates. I, of course, think Mr. Gary is well-qualified, but again, lacks the experience. So I think part, for me, has to do with the ability to work well with management and have that management experience, because we do have other departments that we are dealing with right now that are having people management issues. And so for this, I think it's crucial to maintain that stability within the office, that somebody with that management experience be chosen. And once again, this board has voted for people with more experience over people who have passion and who want to do this. And so I would say that Mr. Bushling not only has passion, is going to run again, is the most qualified, has the experience with the management. I think it would be the most seamless transition for the department, and I think that's very important. So I appreciate Mr. Mortensen's law enforcement experience. I appreciate Mr. Gary's civil experience, but I think in this case that the entire well-rounded package is with Mr. Bryant-Bushling, and, you know, there's been a lot of thought that has gone into this, and just based on the number and quality of the recommendation letters, I would ask that both of you join me in selecting Bryant-Bushling as the successor to Barry.
Bill, do you have anything to add?
No. I'd make a motion that we select I'd make a motion that we select Stanley Mortenson.
Before we move on, let me add a couple things here. Some of the people in the prosecutor, in the criminal division, had asked if we were going to entertain public comment. And I said, "No, we're not going to do that because this is a very delicate process, and I certainly don't like to hold up individuals to what somebody might choose to comment that could be very disparaging." I did, however, get input from at least a dozen individuals, one actually Court of Lane P D, a deputy within K C S O, and probably eight or 10 from within the criminal division. And most of them had no issues between Mr. Mortenson and Mr. Bushling. I have to look at the issue of longevity. I have to look at the issue of objectivity, and I think, to me, that is crucial because we are a divided nation, and quite frankly, folks, we're a divided community. And that concerns me greatly as well. And I'm not going to go into any more detail than that at this point, but I do appreciate all three, and I appreciate what each one has to offer. And at this point, I will entertain a motion.
I made one.
Would you restate it, please?
I move that we select Mr. Mortenson for the next prosecuting attorney.
Is there a second? I will second. Roll call, please.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Nay.
Chairman Philias?
Aye. Mr. Stanley Mortenson will succeed. Barry McHugh is the next prosecutor for Cootenay County. Thank you. Time is now 2:32. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.